Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna make a slight adjustment to the agenda. We're moving the executive session to item C, informational items to item B. I'll make a motion to approve this agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. I'm just in board rats. All those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign. Motion carries. Now, move on to informational items. Uh, number one, spring break, business office hours.
Nothing real special, just notification to everybody. We all have a modified hour so that our office staff can have some time with their families. And so we just want to make sure it's for public record that everybody knows.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Alright, moving on to information item two is NHD State History Day.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. Hi, I'm Dean Smith. My wife, Kyla, uh, I teach at Housen Middle School and I teach as at the high school. We are both, I'm the, um, uh, uh, club advisor of the history club at Housel Middle School.
I'm the advisor of Woosh at the high school.
National History Day is a very interesting project. We started, I think this is our twentieth year that Prosser has sent kids to state. Um, and we've had some really great history that what we've done. National History Day, students pick a project. Teachers don't tell them what they pick. Students decide if they're gonna work individually or group. Students decide what kind of project. We have a website that's going to state. Students can make exhibits, they can make documentaries. We have an example of two documentaries for you today and two exhibits. We also have performances. We sent a performance to Nationals last year. Madison Smith went as a, doing an individual performance, so we have a really good history. And we want, wanna show you some of our good work. Two excellent exhibits set up out there. And I'm wondering if there's any way you can pause for, yeah, folks to get up and look at these wonderful exhibits. And then we have two documentaries to show you.
Yeah, I think we could pause and go out and learn about the exhibits.
Alright.
And, oh, one more thing about NHD that just takes it to the next level. NHD students have to present their projects in front of a panel of judges. They have to defend their work. It really takes it to a super high quality. And so, um, our students out there in front of their projects, feel free to ask them about their topic and things.
They know much more than you will see. Thank you.
Yeah. Those were my two picks.
Those were good. Maggie, I thought for sure the bubble. I'd be curious to see their adjustments.
We needed to see the others that chose that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Over there because.
Well, I wish they would like send a page.
Yeah, cuz then you light it. Oh, yeah.
We'll do that. In fact, we're thinking of my, um, kind of like they do at the big state, which I don't think they're fine. I don't think they've done it, but they had it on the screen, so we might do presentations in the auditorium and have it come up with the title.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which should be kinda nice, cuz then everybody should, oh, yeah, remember. It'd even picture the kids, which would be really nice.
Yeah, cuz they did that at, like, Nationals, like when it was virtual.
Yeah.
Well, at state they announced.
They said the title, last year, which I didn't have the title, cuz the guy made fun of my title. And then Valerie, and then Valerie had that whole, like, yeah. Noah's work schedule is here, I know that, like, he wasn't able to come to school, like, he works at.
This is, this is a teacher's work.
A teacher's.
It's just the work, really. The students are allowed to use it too.
Yeah, they are.
But I don't think they ran it, cuz I mean, I know it was.
Yeah. I mean, like, the dice are playing.
Yeah, but that's because they're making something where the future is set.
Those classes coming.
Yeah.
And, and I can explain.
Kitner does their whole, like, debates in here.
Oh, yeah, it's perfectly.
Yeah, cuz when I got here.
Well, in the closet, all the, like.
Fourteen was taken off.
Not the mold.
And, uh, she liked the. I was like, no, it was me being with some.
People kept using the wrong, so they had to leave, like, people would see, putting the, like, the part that cut up, upside down. And somebody's standing, like, it was.
Well, and, and I figured, well, we already got one, and somewhere else, so I just throw it all, but yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, there's a couple of issues behind that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just seeing.
Yeah. No, let's see, send Jay, my new back.
Then I, we try not to do that, especially like that where he has some options. Usually we'll take the one that doesn't require putting modular bus or how we come around. That was like, you know.
So fourteen always comes around. So if you call me dispatch, she'll stop. Cause she goes down to the library.
That's right.
Okay.
Last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't wait for some.
You know? Like. Makes me know you're right back.
I know.
And, like, whether we.
Okay, so, like, can you load up there? And you wanna talk after? But I do want you to mention that Ken Burns effect. Because it is such a cool way that you've added motion to a single picture.
Who, uh, who's going first?
Uh.
Me and Ann Rader.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to bring.
Do you want us to stand right here?
Where's the place that they should stand?
Well, right behind the, uh, table there. Sit or stand behind the table. Uh, but that's where the microphone is.
Okay. I will just introduce you real quick and say you're gonna start, and then I'll do it, and then they're gonna.
Yeah, well, we need to pull a lot.
Are you nervous? You don't need to be nervous. They really don't bite, and they really like to, yeah. Oh, relax. No one's judging you, and I promise we'll all clap when you're done, so.
Improvise.
Yeah.
Hi, Jenny.
Hope they're still quizzing. Yeah, they, I mean. Isn't there any service? I'm just hoping not in the public. This is A W O E, you know, can't just fear. Because of the science. Upon the. That would be A and. A woman's. But somebody, if they're going to state.
But somebody should help them. Yeah. Pretty cool, huh?
That is cool.
Did a great job. There's a lot of. We gotta wait for two more. Sorry. Do you know that's the first time they use the internet in space? Nineteen ninety. Couldn't even get on the internet on Earth. Get it from space to here.
And you remember the sound.
Oh, yeah, very vividly. Until somebody called your house and kicked you out.
Yeah, I did that there.
Oh, okay, okay.
I said, you guys figured out that they had a report?
What was the thing? They talk so soft, I'm sorry.
At a turning point.
Turning.
Turning points in history.
And that was the.
Yeah.
When the turning of the.
Very creative.
Oh, yeah.
We used to have singing contests between our two classes. Ready to go?
Yeah, I think you could go ahead and go.
Thank you again for the opportunity to brag on my kids. We did very well at regionals. We have sixteen kids from the middle school and three from the high school who qualified for state. They did amazing different projects in all different areas. I, we, uh, have, uh, these, uh, amazing ladies, Reagan and Mina, took first place in group documentary. And, um, I'm gonna have them show you their documentary and talk a little bit about it. They did some amazing things with the clip, the video, the talk, and I think you'll enjoy it.
A woman's right to vote, the turning of many minds. Women fight for the vote. In the middle eighteen hundreds to early nineteen hundreds, women were being treated unequally all around the world. Women did not have the same rights as men. Suffragists fought against society and sexist stereotypical beliefs to earn the rights they deserved. On August eighth, nineteen twenty, the Federal Congress passed the Nineteenth Amendment, changing the minds of many men and women. Shortly after, women got the right to vote. This was a turning point because it helped a woman in more positions of power and inspired them to take a more prominent role in government leadership. Women were accepted into better, more important jobs. This turning point gave women more options and better opportunities. The suffrage movement and the idea of fighting for the vote began when Elizabeth C. Stanton, Chrishell Mott, Mary McLuton, Martha Tottenwright, and Jane Cuthbert organized the Seneca Falls Convention on July nineteenth, eighteen forty-eight. Many people went to this. Many women and some men, including some prominent figures, also attended. They all discussed resolutions to gain more women's rights. One of the most important things that happened here was the creation of the Declaration of Sentiments. The Declaration of Sentiments was a list of demands for the women's rights, including the idea of the right to vote. Women wanted to prove to people that they could be equal. They wanted to show that they were just as important and just as strong as men. They were motivated by how they were treated at home, at school, and even out in public, walking down the street, like robots. They were treated like objects by almost everybody and expected to do and think things because their husbands told them to. In the typical household, the mother would work long hours, and then must come home to a messy house. She would then take care of her children and her husband. Often, she was required to turn over her earnings to her spouse. Many of the men of the time would squander their earnings on alcohol. The woman would then have to provide food for her family with any money she could skim off the top of her paycheck. If she were caught, she would be punished. This typically involved a beating of some sort. If she did not provide, she would be punished. If she left, she could not leave. She had no rights. She could not even obtain a divorce, but if she couldn't, she would have to leave her children behind with a father who had no idea how to care for them, because women could not be custody. After decades of living like this, an idea began to spark. When women first got the idea to somehow get the right to vote in their heads, they were all so afraid to tell each other because they thought their husbands or fathers would somehow find out. When the meeting of Seneca Falls was announced, many had to lie so they would not be punished for going. In the late eighteen sixties, a rift came between the group. They split apart, becoming the NWSA, National Women's Suffrage Association, and the AWSA, American Women's Suffrage Association. A part of the reason this split happened was the idea of the Fifteenth Amendment. This idea was to help get colored by the votes, so they would be in support of getting women the vote. The NWSA thought that once the men got the vote, they would treat their wives just as badly and not help them at all. While the AWSA thought that they would, the AWSA switched their campaign completely and started to help the men get the vote. The NWSA continued, however, to campaign for women's rights. They also split because they could not agree on how best to represent themselves. The NWSA thought they should campaign to the whole country and talk to the Congress to have the amendment passed. While the AWSA believed that it would be the simplest and easiest way to go state to state and make smaller states there. Women must not depend upon the protection of man, but must be taught to protect herself. Speech in San Francisco, July eighteen seventy-one, by Susan B. Anthony. In eighteen seventy, while scrutinizing the Constitution, Susan B. Anthony found a loophole, a small, but certainly there was one. What she found in the Fourteenth Amendment stated that, "No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of the law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." This meant that the state could not take away their privileges. On November fifth, all the women in both suffrage groups went to the ballot boxes and recommended to be able to vote. When the men said no, they offered a prize. When they refused, they offered higher grades. When they finally were elected, all the women rejoiced and pushed their votes into the box. Eventually, all the police found out. They rounded up as many of the women as they could and threw them into jail. At Susan B. Anthony's trial, she and lots of the other women who were not arrested threw copies of the Constitution in the air for all to see. He highlighted the Fourteenth Amendment and shouted why this mandate had been voted. Susan B. Anthony was charged one hundred dollars for her arrest, but she never paid the fine. "I would have girls regard themselves not as adjectives, but as nouns." From an eighteen seventy lecture called Our Girl, by Elizabeth C. Stanton. On June fourth, nineteen nineteen, the Nineteenth Amendment was finally passed. It stated that the right of citizens to the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States on account of sex. Congress shall have power to enforce this article by appropriate legislation. This meant that all citizens of the United States, no matter what, had the same right a man would have to vote, and Congress must enforce it. The amendment was later ratified on August eighteenth, nineteen twenty. This made it official and undisputable. Women celebrated all over the world. They all knew that if women in America could do it, then so could they. The Americans went on trips to other countries with the funds they had lent as ambassadors. Susan B. Anthony even met the Queen of England once. Women all over Europe and places similar started their own revolutions. They believed in themselves and that they too could be great. Susan B. Anthony was one of the main contributors to the women's rights movement. She was motivated by how she was treated as a kid in school. She was from an early age told that she was too stupid to understand the math in the boys' class. She was treated like an object at school and never given a chance, so her father would give her and start kiss on homeschool. He invited the other neighborhood children to join and said that he could teach them jokes as well as anyone else. When Susan was in her late teens, she noticed her sister being paid less than her brother for doing double the work. When she questioned it, her father said that it was plain and simple, because she was a girl. This motivated Susan in her fight for the vote greatly. Later on, Susan became the teacher of the same math class she was originally not allowed to attend. Trust me, that as I ignore all law to help a slave, so will I ignore all to protect an enslaved woman. Harper Ida Huston, The Life and Work of SBA, Volume Five, Air Company Publishers Inc., reprint nineteen eighty-eight, thirteen fifty-seven. Interview with Sojourner Truth Dramatic Portrayal. Question. What are your opinions on people's right to have rights?
Everyone is deserving of equal rights. Everyone should be equal under the law, rich or poor, colored or white, doesn't matter.
Many prominent figures, mostly women, but some men, contributed into the success of the passing of the Nineteenth Amendment. They all had motivations and reasons to fight for what was right. Elizabeth C. Stanton was part of a family of all girls, except one boy who died when she was eleven years old. She wished to comfort her father from his grief of the loss of his son, so she attempted to replace and fulfill all the duties of the son. She did everything assembled, wrote a course, was her father's apprentice, learned different languages, but her father would constantly say how he wished she were born. C. Stanton didn't face major sexism as she was part of the upper class and got a good education, for girls, but was unable to learn other things because she was not a man. This motivated her into the beginning of the fight for the vote. Interview with Sojourner Truth Dramatic Portrayal. Question. What is your advice for women today?
Oh. To keep things stirring. To keep things moving. Never let the movement go still. And no, no movement or no ideas too small.
Although the women's rights movement has changed so much for women, there is still a long way to go for equality. Women are still being treated unequally in sports, government, school, the law, and so much more. People are still treating women as less than in the workforce, not respecting them in positions of power, and continually doubting their worth. People think they can take advantage of women still to this day. While this movement has been a huge turning point for rights, there is still so much more to be done. The women's rights movement was such an important turning point in history. Well, look, only looks like this now because of the brave women who stood up for themselves. Without them, we would not have so many powerful female leaders. Because of thousands of oxen who dedicated their whole lives since noble cause, we have women who do more than just be a teacher. Because of the courageous women who are willing to risk it all, women can do what they want anymore in life. Because of them, little girls can dream of being anything they want. Because of them, little girls can aspire to be great. Because of them, little girls can dream and not just be a homemaker.
A great job.
Thank you.
You did very well on that. Thank you.
What? How did you decide? You know, you said it was your own decision, you know, like to, what you were gonna do. How did you come up with this topic?
Um, we both, like, want to, like, we aspire to be greater than doing, like, just going to school and then not really finishing anything with our lives, so we wanna, like, do, we like, we wanna, like, live our lives to the fullest, and they couldn't really do that as much as they wanted to back then, and so it really, like, we want to live our lives to the fullest, so we think that it was important, so now we can do that, and everybody else can too.
Was there any fact that you learned that you just thought was shocking?
Um, one fact that we learned was that, um, Elizabeth C. Stanton, she fought for women's rights, but mostly it was targeted towards, like, upper, middle-class white women. And not, like, everyone.
What was the most challenging part of making this project?
Um, the narration, we, like, couldn't really, there was a lot of parts where it was, like, kinda awkward, so we would, like, start laughing, and then we'd have to, like, re-record it, and so that part was a struggle, and then, like, finding time when we could record together or, like, to use, um, like, a good mic and not just use, like, the ones on our Chromebooks. And, yeah, and then also writing the script to, like, have it not just sound so, like, choppy to try and make sure everything, like, flowed nicely together.
Really well done, Joe.
Thank you.
Our last presentation is from our star, Clara Wyckoff, who has been home all of maybe about forty-five minutes to an hour today, cuz she's busy doing everything from to everything else, but, um, I know she's gonna talk a little bit about her experience, but she's been doing NHD for a very long time, has made it all the way to Nationals twice, however, those twice were during COVID. So she has never been able to go on our trip to DC with us, even though she's earned it twice, so, um, she's gonna share her project, which is phenomenal.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, like she said, I've been doing NHD. I started NHD in sixth grade, and I'm now a senior, so I've been doing it for seven years. Um, I started out doing group performance, and then eventually I moved into exhibit. Um, and those were the two of my individual exhibits. My freshman and sophomore year were the ones that I made it to Nationals with, although it was virtual. And then after that, last year's when I started doing individual documentary. Um, overall, this is my fifth year having, like, qualified for state and making it to state. And I think NHD has just been, like, a really big part of my life for these past seven years, and I now, like, I don't try anything about what do I wanna be and what my career is. I'm now realizing that, like, I want to go into the field of history, and NHD is, like, a big part of what influenced that for me, and, like, just being able to explore history and for me, it's also to learn about the things that are not talked about, that are kind of hidden or, like, underrepresented. Um, a lot of my projects in the past, this one is not, but a lot of my projects in the past have been related to women's history. Um, and just, like, looking into the stories that don't get told. I think that's, like, part of what I really like about NHD, so. Um, this is my documentary on the impact of the Whitman massacre.
The Whitman Massacre, A Turning Point for Oregon and the Cayous. In eighteen thirty-six, Dr. Marcus Whitman and his wife Narcissa established a Protestant mission at Waylaku, near present-day Walla Walla. Raised during the fervent religious revival of the Second Great Awakening, they had long dreams of being the force that turned Native Americans toward Christianity and, in turn, Western civilization. The Whitmans, along with fellow missionaries Henry and Eliza Spalding, were some of the first Americans to travel west along the Oregon Trail. Eventually, after the Cayous failed to show interest in Christianity, they began using their mission as a stop for settlers following in their footsteps, believing that being surrounded by Christian families would make assimilating into American society more appealing to the Cayous. Instead, this increased the tension between the Whitmans and the Cayous, who felt threatened by the settlers on their land and introduced more Western diseases, many of which were new to the Cayous. One such disease was the measles, which the mission had an outbreak of in November eighteen forty-seven. Dr. Whitman was able to save nearly all of the white settlers, but more than half of the Cayous in the area died, including the son of a prominent leader, Chief Fivecrows. His people, intending to uphold their cultural belief that a medicine man who failed to save his patients should be killed, rallied behind him against the Whitmans. On November twenty-ninth, eighteen forty-seven, in an event that would turn Oregon into a US territory and eventually turn the Cayous into a devastated tribe on the Umatilla Reservation, a group of Cayous men entered the Whitman's house under the guise of seeking medical care and proceeded to kill Dr. Whitman, his wife, and eleven others, taking the remaining women and children hostage. In the weeks, months, and years to come, as the chain of events caused by the Whitman massacre unfolded, its status as a turning point was established. Immediately following the massacre, the British fur traders of the Hudson's Bay Company and the local Catholic missionaries were falsely accused of encouraging the Cayous to attack. The accusations on the Hudson's Bay Company were dropped after they negotiated for the release of the hostages, but the anti-Catholic sentiment stayed strong in the region. It contributed to the rise of the anti-Catholic, anti-immigrant know-nothing party. It contributed to the rise of the anti-Catholic, anti-immigrant Know-Nothing Party in the eighteen fifties and to the revival of the Ku Klux Klan in the early nineteen hundreds. Oregon elected multiple Klan members to state and national governments, including their nineteen twenty governor, Walter Pierce. This anti-Catholic sentiment that arose as a result of the Whitman massacre became so deeply ingrained in society that in nineteen twenty-two, Oregon's voters passed the compulsory education bill, which, if it hadn't been declared unconstitutional by the Supreme Court, would have banned Catholic schools in Oregon. The idea of a Catholic-Cayuse alliance was started by Reverend Spalding, and it wasn't the only story he spread about the Whitmans. In a letter published in newspapers nationwide, he claimed that Dr. Whitman had, in eighteen forty-three, traveled to Washington DC to convince President Tyler to send Americans to the Oregon country, preventing it from being traded to the British. This story, known as the Whitman myth, was started in an effort to add meaning to the Whitman's sudden violent deaths, to memorialize them. As it grew in popularity, the Whitmans, rather than being the missionaries who failed to convert the Cayous, became the pioneering missionaries who preserved the Oregon country for the United States. The Whitman myths have since been disproved. Dr. Whitman's ride west was to Boston to plead before the American Board of Commissioners for foreign missions to allow his mission to continue. And his return trip coincided with the migration of eighteen forty-three, a large wagon train traveling along the Oregon Trail. But the view of the Whitmans perpetuated by them is still around today. These widespread misconceptions are the reason why the Whitmans have largely been perceived as heroic American pioneers. And although the Whitmans did not, as Spalding claimed, save Oregon, the Whitman massacre was a major contributing factor in the establishment of the Oregon Territory. The United States wanted to annex the Oregon country since eighteen oh six, after Lewis and Clark's expedition, and established joint occupancy of the area with Britain in eighteen eighteen, until the border dispute was permanently resolved in eighteen forty-six. Since then, the act to create the Oregon Territory had been stalled while Congress debated whether to allow slavery in it. The Whitman massacre and consequently, Congress's desire to protect their citizens while punishing the Cayous put an end to the debate. Two months after they received word of the massacre, the Oregon Territory was established. By March eighteen forty-nine, the members of Oregon's territorial government arrived in the Territory. The new governor, Joseph Lane, promised the Cayous a war which would lead to their total destruction. While settlers at Wailapu had been waiting for news of the massacre to reach Congress, George Abernathy, elected provisional governor of Oregon in nineteen forty-three, formed a volunteer militia to punish the Cayous for the murders. When Oregon became a territory, Governor Lane and the rest of the territorial government assumed control of the militia. By this time, the Cayous war was well underway. Sporadic battles continued until eighteen fifty-five, when the Cayous, reduced to a fraction of their pre-war population, entered treaty negotiations at the Walla Walla Council alongside the Yumatilla and Walla Walla. The council was detrimental to the Cayous, marking the end of their existence as an independent tribe, as they became part of the confederated tribes of the Yumatilla Reservation. Altogether, the three tribes ceded over ninety percent of their tribal lands. This treaty council is considered by many to be the end of the Cayous war. But it was not the end of the Whitman massacre's impact on the area. Before the Whitman massacre, Congress was at a standstill, unable to pass the act to create the Oregon Territory. And the Cayous were regarded as the most powerful of the Columbia Plateau tribes. After the massacre, the Oregon Territory was created and became staunchly anti-Catholic. The Whitmans were perceived as heroes. And the Cayous, living on the Yumatilla Reservation, were no longer an independent tribe. This moment of violence was indirectly responsible for the Yakima War, the Cortalane War, the Bugis Sound War, and the Rogue River War. The Whitman massacre was a turning point that changed the timeline of the West, and its repercussions did not end in the nineteenth century. Thanks to the Whitman myths, there are many memorials to the Whitmans today, including a statue of Dr. Whitman representing Washington State in the nation's capital erected in nineteen forty-nine. It wasn't until the nineteen eighties that historians began publicly disproving the myths. This shift in the narrative was demonstrated by Whitman College's event commemorating the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Whitman massacre, the first memorial event to focus on the tragedy caused by the Whitman massacre rather than on the Whitman myths. Considering Whitman College had, one hundred years earlier, used the Whitman myths in a fundraising campaign that ultimately prevented them from going bankrupt, this was a large step forward. However, that statue of Dr. Whitman still stands today, representing the false version of him that arose as a result of the Whitman massacre. The Whitmans were not the heroes or martyrs they were made out to be. And their lives were not the turning point they hoped they would be. But their deaths were. The Whitman massacre was a pivotal moment in the history of the Northwest, an event whose impact extended beyond the Whitman sphere of influence and which continued to shape the history of Oregon for decades afterward.
How'd you pick this topic?
So I, like I mentioned earlier, a lot of my previous topics were kind of in the realm of like women's rights, but I really wanted to do a more local topic this year. Um, and so I was just kind of like, I had heard the theme, but I hadn't really decided on a topic. And I was just kinda like open to ideas, kinda researching, just like see what I could find. And I happened to go on a tour of Whitman College and in one of the classrooms, they had a large painting of like the grounds of the Whitman Mission. And it had Marcus and Narcissa Whitman in the painting. And there was like a beam of light shining on them, making them seem almost godlike and just very heroic. Um, and I was kinda looking at that painting and I was just kinda thinking like, I know that the Whitman massacre was an event that occurred and I know that the Whitmans are often made out to be better people than they actually were. But I didn't really know, like, what actually did the Whitman massacre cause? What were the repercussions of it? And so I kinda just, out of curiosity, started researching it. And from there, I started realizing, I started learning about the Cayous war and like all the other impacts and on the political climate of Oregon. And it just seemed like a topic that I really wanted to explore more and to talk about.
Well, it's really informative. I didn't know any of that. Yeah, very well.
Yeah, good job. I would definitely agree with that. Um, I had a question. I'm not sure how to put it, but since you've been in this program for so long, what advice would you give to those under you to keep, keep going down the same path with this program?
I don't think I've ever been asked that before.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I would say just, like, keep going, like, don't, I think my sixth and seventh grade year, um, my N H D projects were not the best. And I was working with groups and, um, my group didn't really want to, we didn't work together well. It was just not like a good group. Um, but then my eighth grade year, I really like, I had a different partner and I really like found a topic and just a different category that I enjoyed a lot more. And that's really when I started like getting into N H D. So I would just say like, just keep working on it and don't, just enjoy like the journey of it, I guess, and the the process of like creating the project. Like, I don't do it because I want to win. I don't do it because I want to go to state. Like, that's just a nice bonus. I do it because like I enjoy the history. So just like, keep going and always be looking for ways that you can improve your project. And just like,
Oh, great. Thank you.
Clara, how did you choose the documentary format?
Um, so I, as I was researching the Whitman massacre, I was seeing like, there were a lot of just paintings and there obviously weren't a lot of photographs because of the time period this was taken in. There's a lot of painting, newspaper articles, political, um, cartoons and other visuals that I was seeing as I was researching. And I really wanted to be able to showcase those. Um, and so that kinda really narrowed it down to like a couple categories. Um, and then documentaries specifically, it allows me to control the order in which the viewers like see the information, like with the exhibit and with website. There's an order obviously that you want them to look at it, but they can really look at it in any way they want it. And I felt like with a topic like this, that's very like nuanced, it has a lot of different sides to it. I wanted to make sure that people were seeing it in like the best order for their understanding. And so documentary allowed me to do that while using a lot of the artwork and illustrations and things that came out of that time period.
That's really well done.
Thank you.
We learn a lot from Clara. It'll be a really good experience.
Great. Thank you for coming tonight. And thank everybody else. Um, thank you for what you do and keep it up. Good job. Good luck. All right, um, moving on to executive session, we'll recess into executive session to pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one ten one G. No action to follow for duration. I'm gonna change that to fifteen minutes. If we need to add it, we can. Um, participants will be board of directors and superintendent Kim Casey. And it's G to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee. However, subject to R C W forty-two thirty-one forty-four, discussion by a governing body of salaries, wages, and other conditions of employment to be generally applied within the agency shall occur in a meeting open to the public. And when a governing body elects to make, to take final action, hiring, setting the salary of an individual employer, class of employees, or discharging or disciplining an employee, that action shall be taken in a meeting open to the public. And we are going to recess into a different room.
So everybody just who's come and we've done executive sessions before, it's always been kinda awkward. We've had the visitors leave and everything. We've, um, the board has chosen to move to a neutral room. So you don't have to get up and move. Five of us or six of us can move rather than everybody else.
Thank you. All right, we'll convene the regular meeting. Um, no action was taken. We'll move on to hearing from visitors. Do we, any online?
No.
Okay, we will. Let's skip that part. Uh, no student representatives. We'll skip that part. Moving on to discussion items, uh, school building report, House, Housel Middle School, Mr. Denny.
You're up.
Perfect timing.
Grand entrance from the back door.
Not saying there's money on this, but I'm gonna talk quick. Do I need the timer?
He's going.
Yes.
He's got it.
You got it? What am I gonna get for my warning? All right, here we go. Right? So, the middle school, you'll hear a lot about sports. That's a lot of athletics. You'll hear a lot of the great stuff. Our eighth grade teams were, um, both undefeated, um, as we finished up, uh, win or two for girls' basketball. But we go into March Madness. And with that comes the academic competitions, which is one way we can demonstrate some of the great stuff. You just saw our N H D students in here. There were four first place finishers, uh, three second place, two third place, one fourth, one sixth. We're taking a total of sixteen students to state, plus the three from the high school for a total of nineteen. So that's awesome. The math team, um, we didn't have as many sixth graders, so that's something we're gonna work on. But seventh grade had three, um, or had a third place, a second place, and four first place finishes on the different testing that they do. Eighth grade had four third place, four second place, and four first place finishes. And they, um, came out first place overall at the math competition. Science, we took six students to science in Union Gap for their competition. Uh, the eighth grade group finished, um, in third place overall. Hayden Baggerly, shout out to him. He, um, has participated for the, um, last three years, all the time that he could. Two thirds in the first place, um, uh, finished for him over that time. Um, art, we hosted the art competition for the district. Um, Christian Peterson won second place for seventh grade. Uh, Chelsea Dormire, uh, got second place for sixth grade. And then their overall painting was of Harriet Tubman, um, to address the prompt for a hero. A lot of them were using sports and stuff. They chose Harriet Tubman. It was awesome. Spelling, we took, um, three eight, three seven, three six graders, um, and our sixth grader, uh, Jayden Nahara placed, um, fourth overall at his level. And then archery, which you'll hear about, they did some awesome stuff. So I'm not gonna take the wind out of their work, but, um, they got a couple of kids headed to Nationals. So, awesome. There's stuff we're working on. Master schedule, science curriculum adoption, preparing for spring testing coming up around the corner, looking at completing the majority of our sit plan before we leave for summer. High school and beyond plan, transition plans for our, uh, fifth graders coming into sixth graders next year. And an interesting fact, two hundred students are out for spring sports this year, which is just under half of our student body.
That's great.
I'm not spending any money on anybody.
Oh, Rick?
I appreciate it. All right, next up is-
I'm fine. I was at two minutes. I don't know.
For C T E.
For C T E, yeah. And Michael and I kind of, we got kind of, kind of a similar theme here. Um, so one of the things I'm really proud of is, of course, our current technical student organizations and and all their involvement. So I know there's been different groups come in for, for out-of-state travel. And just to kinda update you where we're at, so far this year, we've had ninety-seven students participate in state competitions. Eleven have qualified for Nationals or internationals so far. Three teams have won state competitions, four teams have placed at state, and we still have state F A base going on. Um, so we have kids that could very well win, place at state again, or win state and go on to Nationals. And so once again, all, all the organizations across the board have represented Royal, oops. Prosser. Really well. I've, I've done a lot of board reports in my time. Um, uh, one thing C T E is always continually working on is we have many pathways. We have pathways for students going straight to work. We have pathways, maybe a student's gonna be a doctor or a vet or something. We don't, we don't know. And so things we've been working on this year, we have employers that have been reaching out to us and our programs, um, with opportunities for our students. We have a program called Pathways to Perry Technical with articulations where students, um, complete a series of courses at Prosser with a B or above, and then have a successful semester at Perry. They're eligible for a thousand dollar scholarship. And we just added two more articulations today to, to that program. So that's up to five. Uh, students can earn a variety of industry-recognized certificates. I R Cs allow students to, um, verify employers' skills and knowledge and what they can do. And they have to take a test to demonstrate all this outside of the class. Uh, we have increased C T E dual credit to sixty-five credits in twelve classes and in every department. And then we have college, we now have college in the classroom credit available in three classes, nine credits through C W U and three credits through E W U. And we might be, we're, Central might let us add two more courses. They looked at something we were doing. They're like, hey, you wanted to look at this? And so we're, we're looking at if we can articulate that course. And with that, um, I didn't realize that the others, C T E directors in, in our area, in Tri-Cities area, have never done a, a college and high school credits. They've only done C T dual credits. So now they're interested in that. And then, uh, a little-known fact is, two years ago, our STEM program consisted of a CAD class. That was it. And this next year, two thousand, or twenty-four, twenty-five, we're gonna have a total of ten offerings in engineering, design, computer science, and robotics. And this program continues to grow because of the work of Ryan Wood and Kason Blair. And in fact, through one of our articulations, Walla Walla Community College was so impressed, their instructor came up to spend part of a day with Kason to see what was going on in Prosser and was, was, just couldn't believe what we had going.
Good.
Good job. Thank you, Rick. I appreciate it.
The work of Rich Paulette and the work of Rich Paulette could complete all this stuff.
Great. Thank you for those reports. Um, moving on to action items. Uh, first up is out-of-state travel for N A S P State Archery Tournament.
We can talk just as fast. Um, I'm Linda Sedolnick. This is Wendy Applegate. And we both coach the, all the kids, fourth, fifth grade at Witstran, and then middle school now. Um, so just a review, quick review of what's been going on since we talked to you guys last year. We, um, continued with the fourth and fifth graders, or yes, at Witstran. Wendy teaches them the basics of archery and P E, and then we do the after-school program with them together twice a week. And then this year, we added the sixth graders at Housel. And we did the basic archery in our science classrooms. Michael Harris got certified- And we did the basic archery in our science classrooms. Michael Harris got certified. So he and I did that in science for the sixth graders. And then Wendy and I coached the after school program with them twice a week also. Um, the kids went to the state competition early in March. Um, we took a total of, let's see, thirty fourth and fifth graders and thirteen sixth graders. And they all did really well. They exceeded what they normally do, so that was really great. Um. Let's see, two, let's see. Chelsea Dormire, sixth grader, she qualified for nationals. She placed second and sixth in both of her events. And then three others kids, one from Housel. Um, they scored high enough to go and compete at the same time in Utah in the center shot. Um, program. So I'll let you keep going. So we got to the part of that was going to nationals.
Oh, oh, so since we're going to nationals, we're looking for approval for out of state travel. So we're gonna take the, um, the, the four children. They'll be traveling with their parents and Linda and I will travel together.
So we're asking for out of state travel and we're asking for the district to pay our sub costs.
I have a couple questions. Um. I know, I think this year was, it's the first year that you've done sixth grade, correct? Out of this, out of the students that, that are in the sixth grade group, how many of them are new versus how many of them were part of the Witstran group? From last year?
Um, I would say half. It's probably half. Yeah.
That's good.
So next year we'll continue with the archery program at Witstran with the fourth and fifth graders. And then we'll do the basic archery program with the incoming sixth graders, all of them. And then give them the chance if they want to be on the after school program or not. And then, let's see, what else? Oh, and we're gonna include this year's sixth graders, so we'll have some seventh graders. And then we'll have the sixth graders and fourth and fifth graders.
Well, it's great to see it grow.
And we're getting other members that want to have their B A I training, their basic archery instructor training, so. Within our building, so we're trying to grow the help that way too.
I've always thought that was the coolest program in Prosser, by the way. And you're not asking for any funds, just other than the subs, like, to cover this up?
Any other question?
Well, the center shot pools, I wanna get that. What, what exactly is the three D competition?
It's using, uh, not plastic, but like a rubberized animal. It's a three D animal.
Any other question?
No, I'd like to, um, to approve, obviously, travel.
It's been moved and second to approve out of state travel for the N A S P State Archery Tournament. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much. Do we need to ask you about the district paying our substitute costs or is that? Thank you very much. Thanks for your support.
Thank you. Keep it up. Alright, next up is out of state travel Boise State Football Camp. Tough act to follow.
Especially because she's my mother-in-law. Um, kinda, we did it in years prior. This year it's like ten to the twelfth of June for Boise State Football Camp. Parents take them down. We just need approval from the board to allow us to go down there with the Prosser uniforms, Prosser helmet and. Costs will be through the school. We cut the check, we take it down, we give it to their football operations guy Lou Major and process is kinda. Same as it's always been. Check will be cut to the A S B. A S B will cut it to us and we travel with it. Supervision by Boise and ourselves as coaching staff, we're, we're in the dorms with them and who just provided to the school and the university, so.
So can I ask something since this is my rookie? Boise State Football Camp thing. So, um, you said so ten through twelve. So what do we do with those last couple days of school finals, kids?
No, you guys are out, correct? Like.
This year?
Yeah, this year you're.
This year we're out.
Oh, we're out.
Last year we weren't.
Okay, there was some.
There has been the day and a half at times.
It would be good if they moved it like one week later.
Yeah, it's tough because Idaho starts earlier than we do. It's still the best football camp. You talk to regional coaches in the area.
Oh, I've heard amazing things. I just wondered.
They would go, but they just can't. Yeah, they just don't. Their calendars don't like Kamaiakin and different. You know, Moses like those guys and different things. Well, we've had regional head coaches meetings and stuff. They would all like to go to Boise, but their calendars don't fit the bill, so ours luckily do.
Awesome, we're lucky.
Corey, I have one question. Um. You know, when, let's see. We used to have a, uh, program, I think it was to hire a Mustang. You know, what, what, what type of options do? Kids have that may not be able to just cut a check? To get them the funds able, so they can participate in the camp.
Yeah, uh, I was a part of the hire Mustang, like when I first was the head coach. Unfortunately, what ended up happening is. Um, since it was kind of like a donation based thing, we would have some players that quite frankly would get taken advantage of and they would be play. Paid at like forty dollars and they'd be working all day. And so it was hard to navigate that situation, so we kind of left it off like. Um, if they wanna work and get money that way, they could, but we can't be like the forefront of it. Um, there have been sponsors that will go to the school and write checks. And say they'll just donate it to the, the program to kind of lower the overall amount, because the amount that goes to Boise is just a lump sum. Like, let's say like nineteen thousand dollars or something. Um, so there have been sponsors, even last year we had sponsors that would go in that would like to be anonymous or whatever it may be, that would try to lower the cost for everybody. Um, Adrian Gonzalez also did some car washes that helped lower the cost for everybody. Unfortunately, it's hard to get the program out there and do stuff like that because if our name gets attached to it, then, you know, A S B law and different things kinda. Became tricky, so they wanted us years ago to remove ourselves from that. But, I mean, it was a great thing. I hire Mustang did allow a lot of, a lot of kids to go to camp for reduced costs or free. So unfortunately, yes, I mean, and Boise has had conversations with me about that too. Nothing is cheap nowadays. I mean, it used, when we started going to campus, around two seventy-five, it's not gonna be two seventy-five, so. You know, I've communicated with some athletes already about, you know, trying to find ways or sponsors or, or people that in the community that we. You know, that care a lot about the program that we be willing to help and support, but.
Do you have the total cost?
Um, we're still working through it, but it's gonna be around three twenty-five probably. If not, maybe a little bit higher. The universities and the dorms are. Charge a percent fee, so, but I think I can try to. You know, I'm trying to figure out different ways that maybe like a booster or something, like we have a booster fund that maybe can lower that cost, that's gonna cost like the percentage fee. It's, it's better for us also cut a check as a district, because if you do it electronically, they will charge you six percent. Also a kid's individual rate, even though it's taken care of that day is actually higher. And so they recommend cutting the check. And so I was thinking if we can give them a flat fee, it goes through the school, three fifteen, three twenty-five, and then we can figure out ways maybe through booster to cover the difference.
How many players go?
Um, in the last two years post COVID, Boise wanted to run a varsity only camp. Um, so that would bring anywhere from like twenty to twenty-five guys. Uh, this year they are opening it to like a, they would call like a session two. Which be more of a sub varsity that you would, intermixed with maybe some smaller school varsity squads, but, so our hope is to take a, uh, two, two squads again. So it's a little bit taxing on the coaching staff because you double dip a little bit, but, um, it's worth it for the young kids for sure, if we can get, get them going.
And then the school vehicles are for the coaches or?
Yeah, for the coaching staff to be transported down there. And it's nice just to have a vehicle too, in case you have an injury. We have had injuries in the past that we've had to follow up at hospital.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve absentee travel request for the Boise State Football Camp.
So it's been moved and second to approve out of state travel for Boise State Football Camp. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you. Next up is out of state travel for professional learning communities that work. In three different locations. Options. Not all those, not all the.
Some are better than others. Time wise and travel costs and.
I don't even know where Moustuka Illinois is.
Sounds like the cheapest one.
Maybe not, depending on how close the nearest airport is. That's the challenge.
So we would like to go take a team. We went last year, middle school and Heights went last year. Um, this year. We have implemented kind of a, um. I'm gonna call it a tier one. You know, we have, in our schedule, they're able to meet every, um, week. On Wednesdays, we meet as a whole school. Um, we're working, um. We've read down our mission and vision and so we would like to. Take another group. I can tell you, like, I will use my third grade group as an example. My third grade teachers. Um, they're a high functioning P L C team, so they meet today on Wednesdays, they meet on Wednesdays and they'll come in and they have their data. And they'll look at their data and, um, they'll sort their data by students who have received or who are getting it kind of, you know. And they'll talk about their noticings and their wonderings and the next steps. They really talk about those before for kind of questions about, um, our next steps and what do we do with the kids. Um, but this group in particular, they have been able to take it to the next level. Um, they have. Been able to use, um, they know their kids and their, the data so well that they've been able to break up their groups. And so we have two student teachers, but, and so what they'll do is if we're a class. And we're in Mrs. Chanelbox's class, she'll go, okay, but these guys are, were, um. Struggling with fractions, these guys are struggling with, uh, multi, multiplication. Um, and we're just not quite getting it. So what they've done is a response to intervention, which is R T I model, and so they'll. Mrs. Chanelbuck will put up a, um, a slide and say, okay, um, Jody. Uh, Michelle, Brian, you guys need to go to like the multiplication table or, um, well, table, yeah, multiplication. And then Michael and Deanna and Kim, you guys are gonna go across the hall to Mrs. Holman and she's gonna work on fractions. And so, and the kids do, they get up and they go to their spots and they're focusing on those gaps and trying to, um. Fill it in. And so they've been able to do that because, um, they meet every week and we've been able to look at data and we've been able to, um, go through that, so. It's super exciting. I'm really proud of the work that we've done with that, so we'd like to continue. And we've been working on from P L C light to P L C right. That's what we're doing today.
And, and last year we took, I took four. Um, teacher, content teachers. I don't know how many you ended up taking, but.
Four.
So, in a department of four to six, we had one representative, so. Um, when we go to the conferences and you guys have been to conferences, there's the keynote speakers throughout the day, but then there's breakout sessions and so. We could send the same group back and still get even more information, but we're looking to create broader capacity by sending another group down. Um, and so that, that's not just what one person took away from it, it's multiple people will hear similar information. Across time and like, like, you know, Jody had said, uh, better implementation, a broader piece. We were not meeting, um, as a building. We were using the Wednesday afternoons and we're working to put into our, um, system for next year, ability to meet during the day. Based on content areas, um, and or around student groups. And that's, as we look to M T S S, which, uh, we've been working on as a district. Multi-tiered system of supports. Um, one of the things that we're looking at is trying to get, um. Collaboration meetings that include maybe two sixth grade E L A teachers, two sixth grade math teachers and a history and a science. Now you're looking at individual students and their, and their whole experience, not just math meeting or just E L A meeting. You're able to look at students, um, throughout their experience and be able to talk about, well, here's a strength, here's a weakness, here's how we need to support that. And so, as she said, better able to identify the students that need the support, give them the support early. Um, and, and be more, um, intentional about that and, um, laser-like focused to it. And this is one opportunity for us to do that. As schools of improvement, um, we do receive, um, funding from the state, so this would be paid all out of that. There would be no district cost to this, so. Um, we receive a grant. We apply for it at the end of October. We find out, um, early December and then we have to have it spent by end of June. And so the ability to really spread that out becomes more difficult, but part of our school improvement plan for both Jody and I. Um, and our buildings does have, um, a large part around P L Cs, professional learning communities. And strengthening those, so this continues to support that work that our, uh, school improvement plan has put in place is one of the best practices for improving student outcomes.
Great, thank you, um.
I know which one I wanna ask first. Okay, what dated, what data is that the P L Cs are looking at?
They're using form of the data, so like some exit tickets. Um, they'll take usually exit tickets and assignments. They'll have one question if they're working on something specific, they'll take. Um, it'll be a little bit cheap questions, they'll bring it back. It's a common, what everyone does it.
So the, the P L C is made up of multiple teachers from different subjects, maybe in the middle school or?
Mine's third, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade and dual language. So dual language is the vertical alignment, so they have their third, fourth grade and it's been, um, really interesting and. Um, the positive there is that it's been able, they've been able to bridge, because they have to bridge the language and so, um, they've been able to work on that together.
And, and to kind of piggyback off of your question and what Jody had said. By having built in throughout the week, um, P L Cs, that's where we'd be student centered, but the Wednesday calendar allows us to meet twice a month. Um, it for an hour or so as teams, that's where we look at departments. So you'd be looking at department. Um, curriculum implementation, interventions across the department, but during the week you'd be looking at student centered, um, information and, and data.
I also was curious if you could explain to me what effect size means.
Effect size?
Um, there's a, a whole bunch of meta, uh, analysis that are done by John Hattie and his team of researchers. Um, and it goes from a negative number all the way up to almost two now, I believe. Um, but anything above four tenths is showing a positive impact of more than a year. About four tenths of, of a score of an impact size is about what you get in a year's time. If you could double that and be at a, um, eight tenths. It'd have twice the impact of, of a year's worth of instruction or whatever. So when we look at that, like, um. A student being liked is a negative thirty-two hundreds. And so we know that if, if the student does feel, doesn't feel liked by a teacher or peers, that's gonna have a negative impact. And there is, um, maybe detention or suspensions have a negative, whereas teacher clarity has a very high. Um, P L Cs and looking at all the different components that, that, um, Jody had put into the, um, write-up are all the positive pieces that are enshrined within. The P L C work that we do, and so it's multiple, um, high factor, um, effects that are in there, so. When you start putting multiple high factor pieces or high impact pieces together, we begin to see those wheels turn. At more than just a year's growth. We have kids that are two, three, four years behind. If we just do what it takes to, to have that point four effect every year, they will always stay three to four years behind and will end up at the high school, three to four years behind. What we're looking to do is each year have a bigger effect than a year and move them up a year and a half, two years, whatever the case may be, so. We're really looking at what are the high impact strategies that we have and trying to implement those and P L Cs and the workaround P L Cs. Um, is some of the, the more broadly known and I hate to say it, some of the easier to implement too. And so, um, we're looking at those as high leverage strategies that we've put into our, into our school improvement plans to be able to have that impact on student outcomes.
Um, my last question, and I think I know the answer, but the team of teachers that go, they're all going to the same location together.
Oh, yes. We, we aren't so like, I, we put in there three different, because those are the June ones. Um, I will be honest with you, the last week of June works best for me as a principal, because I can wrap school up. Go to this conference and then leave. So for me personally, that's my personal interest is the last one. Now, the team of teachers, like, they have to go through like an application process and answer, but one of those questions is which one works best for you too. So that's why.
We did something similar last year and part of it is too is their institutes fill. So she might, uh, by the time everything settled, it's like, oh, Los Angeles is full. So that way at least they know they could go to one of them. We did it last year when there was choices and we had to pick where we could, the airport was the.
There's no way they went to San Diego?
No.
It's in Minneapolis.
Oh, Minneapolis, okay.
And, and to, to address one of your questions there, are we all going to the same place? We are. So as a school, we're all able to meet between, like, we would meet in the little restaurant and talk about what we learned. So we would all kind of pick strategically what sessions we're gonna go to. We would come back and share that. But I think something else happened that as Heights and Housel sat at two different tables, we began to come together and we began to bridge that gap between two schools. And so that was another, I don't wanna say it was unexpected, but it was another. And so that was another, I don't wanna say it was unexpected, but it was another benefit of that of having us there is we're able to start throwing ideas back and forth that benefited both schools. Not separately, but as a, as a team.
What grades are you, what are, who are you planning to take?
I would like to take third, fourth, fifth, a dual language. Um, this year I really would like to take an intervention. That's why I said five to six. I'd like to take an intervention teacher, which would be either like math or reading intervention or one of my special ed, um, education teachers, because they need to be part of that. This year we only took, um, last year we only took, um, dual language fifth, third, fourth. And a coach and me. So I only took three, technically three in, like, in, um, classroom teachers. And so, and then my fourth grade teacher actually is now the open door teacher. So fourth and then dual language had their own. And so really fourth and fifth grade PLCs didn't have someone to, that had been trained. And so we'd like to keep that going as people leave or people come in.
That makes sense.
And for ours, we, um, last year took a content teacher from reading, math, history and science. We didn't have an instructional coach last year, so our ELA teacher became our instructional coach this year. So we would take again, uh, um, and if, if PE or elective said that they wanted to go, we would consider how to make that happen. But we're, we're focusing at least on, um, a member from each of the four content areas, the core content areas, and then our instructional coach and admin.
Do they limit you on how many you can take?
No.
As many registrations you wanna pay for, they'll, they'll welcome everybody. It just logistically, we put it out there and we had to do some, some, you know, it was the first time we had gone.
Well, we.
We enjoyed our time in Minnesota and so we, we did our best, but it's, it is, it's during the summer and you're, and so you've got travel days on each end. Um, and people have plans. So that was a hard thing is we had to start, you know, kind of begging and borrowing. And, and then when they won, it was amazing, but, um, to get people to have free schedules was, was difficult.
And I.
A little earlier needs to this year than last year. So like, give you a little more time.
And I had a, I had a teacher that when I was like, I really think you should go, like, cause again, you kind of have to like, come on, come with me. And she was like, and now she's like, I will go. And then during the conference, she was like, I just wanna say thank you for, like, making me go. I go, I didn't make you. She was like, you kind of did. Like, okay. But she goes, but this is really good. Um, so.
What's in the PLCs when, especially with the little, they're transitioning from different classrooms? How did, how do they manage that transitioning? I think that, is it overwhelming for them sometimes?
Or like from inter-interventions or third to fourth grade?
Maybe I misunderstood.
Okay.
Straightened out. So like, like if they're going from like their classroom to.
Yep.
How, is that happening on a daily basis? And then how do they?
It's, it's during their math intervention time. They do great. It's fun to watch. I actually went and observed Julia Johnston in Kaylee Holloman's class. So like I walked down there and like truly like they have about one minute and you should, like, these kids are just, they stand up and they all go and they know exactly what to do. And what is also fun is because you're with, um, kids that you don't typically have. And so they're building relationships and they've talked about like that kid, I know this kid, um, so and so's, you know, and so there's, there is an ownership. Like if you, um, and I'll use third grade just because we're, but if you talk to third grade, they will talk about our kids. It's not, well, your kid, my kid. It's our kids because it is. So the, the littles, they define, like honestly, they, they think it's great because then they know another teacher.
Create any other question?
Motion to approve out of state travel to professional learning communities at Work Institute in either Los Angeles, California, San Luis Obispo or this place in Illinois.
Been moved and seconded to approve out of state travel for the professional learning communities at Work Institute. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item four is a twenty-four, twenty-five bus purchase. What do you think?
We need to give her a pat on the back. She doesn't feel real good.
Oh, yeah, the flu and colds running through the bus garage. So. It's already been four days for me. I'm not contagious. I've been to the doctor. I'm just in that slow recovery. I'm exhausted. Plus I've been driving mornings and afternoons. So.
Goodness, well.
Yeah. All right. So to improve our bus fleet, I'm looking at our bids that we got. We can sign these bids and these quotes for the following school year and they will hold this rate for us. And working with Bryson, they're giving us a pretty hefty discount, um, about fifty thousand dollars. And that is upgrading and putting air conditioning in the trip buses. And there's no seat belts in these buses. So it's a win-win.
Everybody wants to know about the seat.
It's a win-win. Um, so we, if we get these, um, signed and sent over, they will lock them in. It's their production right now is eighteen to twenty-four months. So it's really not gonna harm us to sign these and get them in for next year, um, because they won't even be produced until probably, I don't know, probably eighteen months will start looking at production and getting everything ready.
Do we pay for them this year?
Nope.
Next year?
We pay for them thirty days after receipt.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the longer they hold off, the, we'll have our money and it'll be a lot easier. So I don't ever rush them to get our buses to us.
If we don't spend the money.
No, it's TV, it's TVF. We're not allowed to spend on anything but vehicles or parts for buses. So it just sits there. We get paid on August thirty-first every year for our TVF fund of that school year.
And it's use it or lose it?
Uh, no, no. The, this one is not a use it or lose it, but it's a hurry up and spend it. So the state knows that you used it. So you, and it's really confusing how they calculate it. But it's thirteen years. We pay for the bus upfront. We get thirteen years of depreciation on top of a compounded interest and nobody knows the formula for. Um, but it's, it's steadily grown. So we gotta, I did, like, probably about a hundred thousand more this year than we thought we were gonna get because the contracted rate went up on top of the compound interest. So, uh, if we're doing it, but in the next four years, I have five buses dropping off of that. And that, the last payment's about fifty thousand dollars per bus, but then it's about fourteen thousand dollars each year for that. So it'll be significant if we don't refill them with new buses.
So those new buses keep your fund balance healthy?
Absolutely. Yeah, every year it makes it that much easier to breathe because like in the instance of like an engine blowing up and we don't have the money, we can use our TVF fund for that engine on a bus to replace it. So it also helps us with major repair work too, if needed. So we try not to spend all of it at once and keep a little bit in there.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
On the, I don't know, the front page of this, I can't remember the name of it.
On the front engine or rear engine?
Well, it's on the, what do you call that title page or? Um, one of the comments that says historically rear engine buses are used on trips while front engine buses are used on routes?
Yes.
Why is that?
Um, the turn radius is insanely different. A front engine's thirty-five feet, a trip bus is forty feet. The wheels are offset by just enough that like if you're going to Witstran, you can't make a turn easily onto Foizy off of Pioneer in a rear engine without making sure there's no cars around. In a front engine, you can squeak on that corner just enough to not hit anybody.
And your recommendation is two rear engines?
Yes.
So that brings me to my next, well, I have another question. Uh, well, it's, it's ongoing.
Yeah.
So the, the rear engine buses are about twenty grand more per bus than the front engines. Would it not be beneficial for us to, to switch that and change those to front engine buses and then take the forty thousand in savings just because we switched where the engine goes? And maybe push it into like, they're not mini buses, but they're kind of like a large van. I've seen some other school districts have. I just wanted your thoughts.
My, my thoughts on those vans are in order to drive them, they still have to have OSPI approval as a school bus driver. Therefore they still have to be federally drug tested. They still have to come and get all their class hours from me. They have to have continual training to drive a ten passenger van. I can barely keep enough drivers in-house and then to add that on. And then in the PSE contract too with drivers and if it takes away from them and all that stuff, it wouldn't be a fun situation. But I do know that there's a lot of contractors that are using them in our ESD. But I've used them in the past like at midco, but it was like a coach run vehicle for a sports or something that didn't detract from home to school. But they still had to test. They still had to get all their classroom training. It was just additional for them to have a requirement to be a coach.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Um, but as to getting rear engines versus, um, front engine, I would like to replace the seat belted rear engine trip buses because try putting three football players in twelve inches. It's not gonna work. Plus it adds air conditioning and they have the longer drives. They've got the two hour drives to Ellensburg in the summer. Um, it also puts a rear heater in the bus too. I mean, that's just not on the feet. It'll be up on the top.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Any other question?
I move to approve the bus purchase.
It's been moved in second to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five bus purchases. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You feel better and some rest.
We'll get your signatures for you tomorrow.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to new Prosser High School course, courses approved by the District Instructional Materials Committee.
Hey, so we have a handful of new courses at the high school. Um, some of these are updated or replacement courses for old courses we used to have. Like friends, we used to have CAD. We don't have CAD anymore. Uh, but some of them are also new college and the high school courses. So find a few of our career and technical ed courses, a couple of mathematics courses. And then a science course because we have a Megan Dan graph has been approved to teach college and high school. Of these, uh, six courses, five of them are college and high school courses.
Pretty exciting.
A really basic question.
Sure.
Like when I went to high school, forever ago, CTE was like, you had to be in the CTE program to take CTE classes. Is that the case here? Anyone take these?
What is, anyone can take their classes. Um, so like, you're like saying, kind of like you had to choose, that was your path.
That was your path. You're gonna go to technical.
All students.
That's your path.
Graduation requirements in the state of Washington require every student takes CTE courses. So you may.
I'm during my day to see someone in the NAC class and then later on in a STEM class and then next semester in, uh, two business classes.
Yeah. I so, and especially in our high school, it's a very large part of our course offering. So there are every, all the kids are taking.
That's what I was hoping.
Yes, for sure. And it gives, really gives kids a good opportunity to try out a lot of different things. Maybe to see they have an interest in, you know, design or they have an interest in, um, child development, if they have an interest in, you know, computer programming. So that's great.
But the minimum requirement of fifteen students, that we have like ten, are we gonna not have that class?
So we're working on scheduling right now. Uh, Brian's working on it right now. He's doing his part. Kim and I have been trying to help him. Um, but he, that, that fifteen kind of is the expectation. What happens, this is what happens. If we offer a course and we allow ten, that means a different class has thirty-two or thirty-three or thirty-four. So you have to make, sometimes you have to make choices. And then it's our responsibility and our programs to help build kids into that. So you can get more than ten or twelve and you can get the fifteen, twenty, twenty-five and thirty, taking some of those advanced courses. The other thing is, is sometimes you offer them an alternate, alternating years.
That's what I was gonna say.
Like I've not, we're not like, like maybe you have fifteen kids that wanna take robotics, but you, that you know that next year when they're fifteen, it's, it's making sure kids know on, on even numbered years is when we're gonna offer robotics and odd number of years you, we won't offer it. So some of it's that as well, kind of, just like when you're in college, our certain courses, they only offer in certain trimesters or certain times.
Another example of that would be like, if we can continue to build math, algebra at eighth grade, right, then geometry, then algebra two, then you can, your senior math or your junior, let me restate that. Two math classes, stats could be offered one year, calculus the next year, and then you'd rotate it. And they know what year it's offered when they enter school so that they can plan accordingly. So they could take that. The other thing is, is if you have some highly capable students or students that are really driven in the math or sciences, they may take physics and calculus on the same year, right? Like so that they can get all that done. So curriculum planning, more so than just a course, um, guide is really important. And what you're doing now is setting the tone for the class freshmen that are coming in. They have to understand, okay, I gotta do this this year and do this this year so that I can take this and be ready for that class. So that they can take them all before they go to apply for scholarships and other programs. Same thing goes, I'm gonna go back to CTE. You may wanna take, um, robotics, but you don't really know what you wanna do, but you need to take calculus as well. So we gotta make sure that courses are offered so that they can get that broad spectrum while achieving the higher level classes.
In the right order.
In the right order.
Pre-rec and I don't know, Brian had worked my ass on that.
He gets upset a lot. We did just have our freshman orientation. Went very well, briefed parents and families on this exact thing. So and it really is a matter of trying to start prepping families to think about it and look at course description guide of pre-rec starting as eighth graders to try and, and plan for example. So, uh, I was very pleased with the turnout and.
There's someone who can help them with that.
Yep, we're bringing the freshmen up tomorrow at one o'clock. Our counselors will be leading that one. And we are meeting with our other classes, uh, on the eleventh, twelfth and fifteenth. Um, to help them through the deadline process as well. And that's always already rolling pretty quickly down the hill. So, yep.
These new classes, when do you know you have the enrollment that you need to offer them?
As soon as all, all the.
Course requests will come in.
Those dates you just gave you, then kids get their, do their course request, that goes into the system and then you can see all the numbers.
If you don't get.
Well, so then what you do is then you have to say, okay, I have, I, why do I have fifteen or let's say, why do I have thirteen and fourteen? And so then you pull those students and take theirs and did they have both of those high level classes? Do they understand? Maybe there's some seniors that need this one and mostly juniors in this one. Well, you could move those juniors into this class, knowing that they could take the other class next year because they don't understand that. So sometimes it's some meetings after you get that done because that junior who may be in class X would take the class Y if they knew X is offered next year. And if they don't, haven't got into that routine yet, you can sometimes fill that other class to push one of them over. And then you tell everybody, if you took it this year, next year, you're gonna get this one and we'll force that one and not offer this other class.
And sometimes too, when you have kids, like for instance, say kids are signing up, say it was robotics and intro to computers, like might be the same kids signing, saying, this is my first choice, this is my second choice and my third choice. So you also have to go back and look too, like, did they, like, could we off get that? Like, okay, we can't give you your first choice, we can give you your second, then maybe then next year you'll be able to get your, get that other choice. So it's just, it's just, that's the dance of finalizing the schedules after they get all the requests done. Yeah.
People love it. I am not one of those people.
I love it.
Woo-hoo, it's my favorite.
Maybe one day I will learn.
Well, he's exciting. I think it's great.
I have one quick question. A couple of these have fees attached to them. Um, do those fees fall into the same category as like the ASB fee with the new law? They do? Okay. So that's not gonna be a hindrance for, okay, thank you.
And we, and there's no, like, they basically, if a student rolls in a course, if the fee is put onto the, they don't go pay or you can't go to class. Kind of like, if you don't pay, then they kick you out.
Goes on your.
Just goes on.
Account or whatever, right?
Yeah.
And if they qualify under hospital sixteen sixty, then they, that fine is removed.
Okay.
And I know that these guys work with kids that might need the extra handout too, so.
Ready any other questions?
Um, I don't wanna throw, mention anything. I mean, this, this all looks good. My question is, um, on the earth as an ecosystem class, what's the likelihood of being able to look at that curriculum?
So that's, you wanna talk about that? Dictative by the college.
So we can, we can ask who to be to send over what they. Ask me to be to send over what they.
Yeah, we have to get it.
College and high school course, so it's their curriculum. Teach their curriculum if we operate, so we can get it.
We have to get it, of course, it's approved anyway, so.
So I I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna piggyback on maybe what your thinking there is. When we are um have an agreement with a university of any kind. And we say, okay, we're gonna teach English one oh one with University of Washington. It's their curriculum that we're teaching to their standards, to their rubric, to their grading policy. Rather than our English ten or English eleven, it's our curriculum. So just to clarify that, if you see CBC in front of something, or if you see Eastern, you do whatever, it's their curriculum that we're teaching.
Any other question?
Motion to approve new Prosser High School courses approved by the District Instructional Materials Committee.
Been moved in second to approve the new Prosser High School courses. Approved by the District Instructional Materials Committee, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item six is the mental health matters grant and S A A S agreement.
Um my recommendation at this time is that you table this um matter, I spent quite a bit of time with um our representative and I I feel like at this, the we can't just get the suicide prevention training, which I was hoping we could at least do, because it's really part of a whole platform of for teachers and students, and so because of the cost and because we haven't done a full review, I think that we should review it when we do our health and PE curriculum review next year and right now ta- table it for now and and decline the grant.
Is there any other um programs that we've that you've looked into?
So I I have, um it's not, I don't know that it's necessarily training, but I've been working with Kimberly Starr. Who has a a spec, you know, has very special interest in that, so she and I, I'm reviewing some some information and opportunities she sent me. Um but not, I have it on my calendar after break because I haven't had time yet. And then I'm, she and I are gonna meet and we're gonna talk about this further, I know that there, we've um offered before youth mental health first aid and we have, there's other opportunities um for providing this, some training. Awareness for sure. So I'm I'm working on it, we do have a a day for social emotional learning dedicated to training and support for teachers on social emotional learning. But we've really talked a lot about the need for teachers to understand adaptive behavior strategies with students because of um some of the challenging behaviors we're seeing and and a lot of times we might only train. Uh in the past, you might only seen like special education teachers or life skills teachers and parents being trained in these strategies. And it's um becoming more apparent that everybody might need some of these strategies, so there's some of that too. So we we aren't gonna be, we aren't gonna be able to dedicate and and we wouldn't dedicate our, we wouldn't be able to dedicate our whole day to that because we really do need to work on this behavior piece as well, but we, I I I think that um Kimberly has been offering uh a program and presentation, she's been offering to do that with us for a couple of years. And so I think it might be a good intro, it's more of a mom's perspective and the way you can talk with kids around suicide, so I'll be back with more information on that when I feel like I know more.
So is this a table or a post?
So table, I think, I don't know if that's the right term, because table was like table. Versus postpone was like, oh, we'll talk about it next time, so you postponed it before, I think.
I think, I think, yeah, I think, well, um I'll I'll move to table this to a future date.
Just table it. I think it's just table. I'll bring back a different proposal in the future if we, if it's something that I want to, yeah.
One move to table.
She and I have been communicating.
He's on board.
She is, I actually email, I have an email from her. Yeah, she, I've been emailing with her and she was really excited about this, I talked to her and just said, there's several reasons, I think that this is the best decision, she understands. Um and 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 understands why that is the decision I'm recommending. Um and then and then and she and I are gonna work together, so.
What do you think the timeline is for that, I'd like to see something.
I'm going to, so I uh I'm I'm gonna be on vacation, starting, I'm gonna be on vacation during spring break, so it'll be in April.
Oh, well, that's great.
Yeah. We have to get that set up for.
It'll be the August training.
Yeah.
And so that means it comes to you before that.
Very soon.
So I'll move to table the mental health matters grant and S A A S agreement. Been moved in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Uh moving on to item seven is second reading of procedure forty two thirteen, school district firearms and use of force.
So I just want to tell you, we found um one comma and a and or that needs to be fixed. Um um I feel from what I can read on the Robert's Rules of Order, they do not have change in the meaning. Um but it does read better, so on the I didn't print it out, so if you don't mind me looking over your shoulder, um where the long description about who can work for us up on, I think it's qualifications, retired or school, where, so it says procedures for security officers. Um persons and qualifications at the second to the last line, a liosa card comma right there, and slash or like a and or, right, and those just need to be fixed in there, otherwise it is as presented.
You wanna pull the heading right here to make it.
Sure. Yep, we can do that one too. Other than that, there is no changes from as presented.
I'll move to approve the second reading of procedure forty two, second final reading of forty procedure forty two thirteen, school district firearms and use of force with the aforementioned edits. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, excuse me, motion carries.
Selena, did you catch that bold fit into?
Okay, moving on to resolution zero three two four declaring technology surplus.
Uh Sean was not able to be with us this evening, she sent me a uh an email, basically um you'll see on the list, some of the items are very old, some of the items are end of life. In the world of technology, they're no longer supported, some of them are just um close to the end of life, so some of will go to surplus with value and some will be basically no value or would be scrap. One of the things she wanted me to share with you is sometimes, uh uh let's just take my laptop, if you surplus it and it going, it's going out onto the street for sale. We have to wipe and remove the hard drive, okay, so it's not worth the manpower and time to remove the hard drive and do all of that. So they go to a different kind of scrap so that it's secure and do versus selling them to the general public. Okay, and that was the only thing she wished for me to share.
Most things are recycled.
Yep, yep.
Most, most.
Most all of it's recycled.
By a company.
Company and it's recycled.
It doesn't go to the land.
But we wipe them clean before.
Actually, um teacher, they do pull the hard drives out of a lap, like out of Chromebook because there's not a hard drive back, a laptop and they shred them.
Okay.
And then they get recycled, so surplus is not like literally throwing it in the dumpster or selling it down the street, it goes to a recycle service.
Thank you, any other question? I moved to.
A lot of old Chromebooks.
Yes.
Yeah.
I only have about a five year.
Yeah, five years.
Life expectancy.
My move to pro- approve resolution zero three two four declaring technology surplus. It's been moved in second, this is a resolution, so we'll do a roll call, vote. Michelle? Brian?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yeah.
And I too will vote yes, uh motion carries. Thank you. Uh moving on to vouchers. Any questions on vouchers? I have one. Um under the capital voucher, we, when, my question is when is Heights and Keen River View are you gonna be final?
So I talked to Dan today, um and K R V is done, um but they're dealing with a warranty issue. And then Heights has about five thousand dollars worth remaining, that H P Fowler is gonna come in uh during spring break and finish. And then after that, they'll bring the architects out to finalize both schools, so we're hoping after spring break.
Awesome.
Yes.
Great news. Thank you, thank you for playing. Yeah, you're kidding, we'll have Whitstrand for a little bit, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um great, thank you, any other questions? I'll move to approve vouchers. Been moved in second in to approve the vouchers, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Moving on to consent items. One, two and three.
Make a motion to approve the consent item.
Been moved in second to appro- approve the consent items, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. That concludes our action items for tonight, moving on to reports, Delise.
Good, um I have enrollment today, um we're holding pretty steady, we are two down in the month of March. Um but it, we're still in a way better place than we were last year. Um last year we had two thousand three hundred and twenty seven students enrolled and this year we have uh two thousand three hundred and ninety two. So we're up sixty five from March of last year, so still in a good spot.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
And you know, I've been talking about the trends around us. Down two is like up ten. If you talk to and look at other enrollment reports. Um and we're happy to say, um I think you're gonna be pleased with April. So it's, I'm excited, pleasantly excited.
I can't wait.
We'll see.
Great, thank you, Delise, any questions? Thank you. Yeah.
Uh three things, we had our early learning night last night. That we did ourselves, um couple challenges, they discovered that the counting bears were the size of a chocolate chip, but that was an Amazon order thing, um so we had to pull those out at the last minute because they were way too small to give to small children, but other than that, that was just, hopefully Jesse's listening because her sound, she ordered. But Jesse, really truly Jesse took the leadership on this, all working with Heights Review and our E cap, um the E cap staff came over as well. Uh to talk to families, we had, we died say between twenty and twenty five families and it was family, so the least number would be two people and some were five or six people and so they had dinner and um it was really cool the way they set it up because last year we did, there was just um um the E S D did it and then with us and they bought the materials and stuff, but they just did, it was mostly at just academic activities, but they did, um they did a, they had our P T and O T had like a physical um like, kind of like, you know.
Obstacle course?
Yeah, kinda, you know, not really like American Ninja Warrior, but you know, for three year olds. And little things, things to climb on them balls and things they could throw and all of those things and um we also had a station where they talked about regulating emotions and with our counselors. And then they did a course numbers and letters and all of those things and um so they, should they did a great job, so thanks to Jesse and the Whitstrand River View and E cap staff and I don't know if Kevin, um how much, but Jesse really did take charge of it. Susanna helped her quite a bit, those little tiny bears were a problem, but it's okay that disaster wasn't hurt it. Um I have Prosser Leadership, I've been participating in Prosser Leadership along with Nikki Swanson. Um they did select, you know, the unified sports program here for as their, as their pro, as we selected that as our project unanimously. If you, if I haven't talked about unified sports before, it's a a program that come um uh is a, it's a Special Olympics program, and so students that are um in our special services program. Plus students who are non athletes but would like to participate in sports, participate together. Um we have, there are teams in Grandview, Sunny Side and Walawala, they will play the uniforms, we're gonna start with basketball. Um and so we're raising the money as kind of the startup funds, um it's amazing program. Um it, yeah, it's amazing program, you probably might have seen stuff on social media from some of the other districts. We want them to have nice uniforms, look like they're Mustangs, all, you know, it's not T shirts and gym shorts, so. Um so that that's going well, there's gonna be, you'll see, there'll be a um a kind of a media campaign that comes out requesting donations, we're trying to do some, we've done some fundraising work and do some more to get that started. Um there's a need, uh basketball's the start, we wanna have soccer, we think that's a pretty popular one too. Um and they're gonna start with a cornhole tournament, actually, because they they play during the same sport season time as basketball season, soccer season. So because those are over, um they're gonna do cornhole, they're gonna do a cornhole tournament, so evidently Prosser Hospital's very into cornhole, they have a lot of cornhole boards, so um in case you were wondering, where to get those. Um and la- and it just, I, you know, thank, thanks to Brian, Rick, there's been so much work. Casey Blair on college and high school, we have thirty nine courses right now waiting on some more being approved, and I would say six years ago, we had one. So it's pretty exciting, anyway, that's it.
Um my paper's coming down, there's probably too many and just leave them down there at the end. Um yes, I was on vacation this last week or a full week ago, so the list is smaller. Um we did have our yes committee celebration, uh was great to spend a little time together and celebrate and have some insights on the work that we did in the levy. There's nothing really new in the legal area communication, um the tenants competition for March Madness is still going on. Um Kevin Gilman and the Whitstrand crew really wanted to see me get a pie in the face, uh they really wanna win, so we'll see how that turns out. Um the Teachers Association in the school district had our first negotiation meeting, it was kind of a meet and greet and setting some guidelines and and so forth, next, last, or on Monday. Um so our next meeting is April twenty second, our first true negotiation. Um so great partnerships are going on, you're gonna be excited, public who is listening. Camp Dudley um for uh science for the fall and next spring. The Princess Theater, you're listening if you are in the first grade or have students in the first grade, we are going to have Winnie the Pooh with first graders at the Princess Theater the last week of May. And all first graders will, will have four showings of the prin- uh Winnie the Pooh at the Princess Theater. Um that is going to be a pilot, you might say, into doing a first, second and third grade, so we have three trimesters, right, so we don't know the order yet, everybody listening, we do not know the order yet. But we will do, one trimester will be one first grade, one trimester will be second grade and one trimester will be third grade. They'll each have their own play in production, expanding our arts programs. Um Starbase, if Kevin was listening, um fifth grade is loving their time and uh Hermison at the Department of Den- Defense, um they're engineering, the teachers, I think are, everybody seems to be good, this is a pilot. Um to start small, to figure out how we're going to expand. Our goal, it's big.
The challenge is you have to go for at least four times with only forty kids and that's, that's like.
So to get two hundred kids there, that's five, four day weeks and that's all that busting back and forth.
And it, mommy's gone, but she probably might.
Yeah, have a heart attack, but we have to find, but so anyhow, we're we're working on it, but our goal is to give students experiences outside of that, so, but that that pilot is going well and it's doing what they said it was going to do and so we're hoping to be able to expand that. Um still working, we're still waiting on the last quote, if everybody understands, we've been working on the old Prosser High School, trying to get some things done. There are very strict guidelines that we have to follow and we have to get that third quote in before we get started on the roof, so we're kind of working on that. Safety and security, we're still having our meetings every two weeks, we've got the signs on order, things like that. A W S P, we had our um session five was on Monday, we have our session six on April nineteen. This has just turned into, if you don't know Gina Yance, anybody's listening, but Gina is, works for A W S P, she's just a positive person, really allowing us to do some thinking and growing as leaders. Um fiscal. Um, fiscal, I know, um, Delise down there doesn't talk a lot about some of the hard work she's doing, but it has been amazing. Um, we did get, so that the state approved the budget, right? So then, if you think about it, think about doing your, if you're a TurboTax or a tax person, right? So they have to wait till the budget's approved, so they know when all the numbers go into the backside of the program. So we finally got our, what's it called?
Oh, it's kind of budget.
Yeah, the budget tool. There's a word.
Oh, the John Janet.
Yeah, this name that I can never remember. It's like all.
It's John, John Janet.
And it's whoever created it, I would imagine, some guy.
Some guy who likes spreadsheets.
So we finally are getting those numbers there, so that now we have, we know what we're getting for our M SOC and our, all of our different numbers, so that we can start working on that. Um, we're just, I think we have.
Couple more.
Couple more departmental budget meetings, um, and then we'll be able to do that and put those tools in. Um, it's really exciting. I know you kind of have to be a geek like me. It's kinda like me like in scheduling, sorry, Brian. I kinda like the budget thing. I like to see it all come together and, and then tweak it down so that we can present something that we have confidence in. Um, that our account codes and our people and our staffing and all of this stuff are away. So Delise gets a lot of credit for that, and I think Dan is going to be really happy when she works in her grants in the future that things are laid out the way they're supposed to be. Upcoming, um, R F Q and R F Ps for the project manager and architect are now closed. Um, so this next spring break week, excuse me, we will review those and then do interviews. And, um, we have the R F Q that you've approved for, um, appraisal, appraiser, that will close later in April. So we got that stuff going on. And to everybody listening, you got two days, you can do it, and then spring break.
Great, thank you. Okay. Uh, moving on to board reports. Michelle?
I've been out of town last week, so I don't have a whole lot personally to report, but, um, I do have to say how exciting it was to come home and read the agenda and see really great things like the curriculum for C T E and archery success and N H D, and then to get your message, Ken, about all the great stuff that's going on with, um, Camp and the Princess Theater and all those partnerships. So I just wanna say kudos to everyone who's been doing all the great work for our district.
Thank you.
A big smile on my face when I read it.
Uh, no, I don't got much, um, hopefully, uh, staff and admin, all you guys have a great spring break and a lot of good things going on, so. I'm looking forward to getting back to it.
I attended the play, Clue, and it, I don't know if you, you'll have got to see it, but the way the ending, um, were done, there were set multiple ending. And the whole play was wonderful. I thought this, uh, student and Mr. S D did a fantastic job.
Was funny.
Really enjoyable. It was wonderful. I know a lot of community members helped make sure everything happened for the play. Wonderful, and I'm so excited about the partnership with the Princess, including our littles, more into theater and more arts opportunities. And the Camp Dudley experience, bringing that back on imagery kids. There will be a fundraiser for the National History Day, kids that are traveling to state. And maybe there'll be some sort of national, um, at the evil on April tenth, same time as a board meeting. But they will be doing a dinner. The ladies areas is doing that, so please go have dinner, make a donation, and it will get back to N H D.
Delise, you just reminded me, I also saw that Prosser P T O is doing
Right.
an auction on bingo night, I think it's April fourteenth, um, raising money to support STEM programs. So I don't know where that's gonna be.
Yeah, in the multipurpose room.
What date was that?
I think it was the fourteenth. Well.
And that's at the old P H S. Got it, thank you.
That's it.
Okay, um, I don't have much, just attended the open, uh, the groundbreaking at the Boys and Girls Club. It was a tremendous event. A lot of people showed up. Uh, Dan did a great job representing the district, did their shovel. Um, and driving by today was nice to see that there's actually garbage outside there that they're getting ready to throw out. So they're moving, moving and shaking, so.
Yeah, they are.
Um, so it was, it was cool. It was a great, I think it was a great opportunity for this community and, uh, our partnership with the, with Boys and Girls Club. Uh, that concludes, uh, all the reports. Any other comments? Questions? Um, our future meeting, we'll have a regular board meeting, April tenth, right here in the Prosser Library workroom at six P M. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.